Thank you. Good morning, and welcome to today's hybrid New York City Council hearing for the Committees on Aging jointly with senior senators. To minimize disruptions, please place all electronic devices to vibrate asylum mode. If you'd like to submit testimonies, please send via email to testimony@council.myc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation, chairs, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, and welcome to the joint hearing on food insecurity and older adult centers. I am Darlene Neely, Chair of the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurities. I want to thank the Chair of Aging Committee, Councilmember Crystal Hudson, for joining me today to discuss this important topic. The COVID-19 pandemic took a spotlight to the issue of hunger in the older adult community, and record inflation has only worsened this crisis. Currently, at least one in eight older New Yorkers do not know where their next meal will come from. According to a study published by United Neighborhood Houses, older adults of color are five to six times more likely than their white counterparts to experience food insecurity. Older adults face acute isolation and trauma even before the pandemic hit, and now have hunger and rising food costs as added burdens. If we do not address the crisis-level problem of food insecurity in our city, the negative fiscal and mental health outcome that older adults now face will only get progressively worse. That will have a pronounced set of unintended negative consequences for our city. Statistics show that food insecure older adults are more likely to suffer from depression, asthmatic, diabetes, and congestive heart failure, adding to other already existing health challenges that they face. That is why I have called on the mayor and this administration to do more to address these issues by putting more money into the already stressed and strained food pantries and soup kitchens in the city that serve our older adults. This means a long-term commitment and investment in programs that feed the most vulnerable New Yorkers. We must use all of the tools at our disposal to connect older New Yorkers to food assistance they need in the communities where they live. Through Conquer It and Grab and Go Meals at older adult centers, home-delivered meals SNAP, and our city's network of food pantry and soup kitchens, and with the administration's strong support, we can reach our goal of ending food insecurity for our older adults. I want to thank the administration, advocates, and members of the public who have joined us today. I would also like to thank the staff and the Subcommittee staff. I would like to thank our Commissioner for being here today and looking forward to her testimony, and I will now turn it over to our Chair, Crystal Hudson of Aging.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Neely. Good morning, I'm Councilmember Crystal Hudson, Chair of the Committee on Aging, and thank you again, Chair Neely, for calling this very important oversight hearing on food insecurity and older adult centers. As Chair Neely acknowledged, the pandemic hit New York City hard, and between uncertainty and the fear of infection, coupled with stay-at-home orders, our most vulnerable New Yorkers suddenly found themselves even more susceptible. Faced with this unprecedented crisis, the government, community-based organizations, and service providers pivoted operations in an effort to respond to the new and altered needs of New Yorkers, and older New Yorkers in particular. This included the temporary closure of the city's 300-plus older adult centers, which not only provide older New Yorkers with hot meals, programming, and social services, but also a sense of community. While DIFDA has long offered home-delivered meals to New Yorkers, older adult centers began offering grab-and-go meals, virtual programming, and providing services over the phone. Neighbors and other community members also banded together to fill gaps. During that time, I founded Greater Prospect Heights Mutual Aid, a neighborhood network that for over two years provided material, emotional, and informational support to meet the needs of neighbors experiencing food insecurity and economic instability, especially for our older neighbors in Prospect Heights, Brooklyn, and surrounding communities. Through that organization, I saw how many of the folks to whom we provided services, including older adults, remained fearful, even as the height of the pandemic waned, of going to congregate settings due to fear of the virus, and some of those individuals were undocumented and sensitive to any encounters with government. So I'm acutely aware of the importance of meeting older adults where they are. Now that older adult centers have reopened and are largely reverting back to in-person services and programming, there remain older New Yorkers who would continue to benefit from services like grab-and-go meals, which are no longer available at every OAC. From available data, we know that persistently high rates of food insecurity and hunger, disparities in diet-related diseases, and low wages and unsafe working conditions for food workers disproportionately harmed Black, Latinx communities, immigrants, low-income populations, LGBTQIA+ individuals, and older adults. We also know there are large disparities in reporting food insecurity by borough, with rates in the Bronx and Brooklyn significantly higher than the city average. As such, it would benefit the city to aggregate this data and use an intersectional lens to identify disproportionately impacted communities to which services can be targeted. At this hearing, I'm looking forward to learning about how the city is identifying and meeting the nutritional and other needs of older New Yorkers. I'm also interested in understanding the decision to end certain pandemic-era services that are still in demand by some, especially when the number of older adults living in New York City is projected to grow over 40% by 2040. As a city, we must ensure that we have plans and systems in place to serve the ever-aging population and its plurality of needs. Thank you to the advocates and members of the public who are joining us today, and thank you to Commissioner Cortez-Vasquez and other representatives from the administration for joining us. I'd also like to thank my staff, Casey Addison and Andrew Wright, and the Aging Committee staff, Christopher Pepe, Chloe Rivera, and Daniel Krueg. I'd also like to acknowledge Councilmember Linda Lee, and I thought I saw Baron, but...
No.
Okay. I'll now turn it over to Committee Counsel Chris Pepe, who will administer the oath to the administration. Thank you.
Good morning. I will now administer the oath. Commissioner, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you, Commissioner, you may proceed.
First of all, I want to thank Councilmember and Chair Hudson for acknowledging that they're called older adult centers. So, one of the things that... Yeah, got you there, Councilmember Neely. We'll change that. First of all, good morning, Chair Hudson, and Chair Neely, and members of the Aging Committee, and the Subcommittee on Senior, formerly called Senior Centers and Food Insecurities, soon to be called Older Adult Clubs and Food Insecurity. As you just said, I am Loreen Cortez-Vasquez, and of the New York City Department for the Aging, which we are now calling NYC Aging. I am so... Every opportunity to combat ages, and we do not miss any opportunity. I'm pleased to be able to testify before you today on a topic which is so fundamental to the work that we do at NYC Aging, which is combating food insecurity among older adult populations in New York. In fact, it was the bedrock of the Older Americans Act when the Department for the Aging was first established many years ago. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this matter, and I'm looking forward to giving you an overview of some of the important work that NYC Aging does to connect older adults to food services, food resources, and to combat hunger in this vulnerable population. As you know, and you've both stated, COVID-19 pandemic disproportionately affected older adults in a variety of ways, from health outcomes, many of which we still do not know what the long-term outcomes are, to connectivity issues, social isolation, and even safely accessing food, a basic need for life. Older adults felt the impact of this global pandemic deeply. At NYC Aging, we are eager to re-acclimate older adults to a life where we live and adapt to this new reality, because I don't think that we'll ever go back to life as we knew it. Because of that, this fall, we were excited to launch a Join Us campaign, which encourages older adults to return to their local older adult centers, the OACs. They were connected to programs and activity, including congregate meals. This is really important, and I want to give a shout-out to Chair Hudson for her recent tweet about that campaign in the subway. In recent weeks, the OACs, as a call category to aging, which is a call category to aging connect, NYC Aging's in-house contact center, you all know that we have a very specialized information, expanded information referral center, has increased since the start of the campaign, and we are hopeful this is a sign of increased attendance in our centers. Regarding food insecurity in older adults, New York City Aging focuses on two main programs to meet the various needs of clients in New York. First, older adults can access congregate meals within those OACs, and depending on that provider's contract, they can either provide a breakfast, or a lunch, and sometimes a dinner at a particular center. Secondly, older adults who cannot attend an older adult club, or who are unable to shop for themselves, may be entitled to receive home-delivered meals through our HDM program. Older adults have access to healthy nutritious meals at all older adult centers across the city. While the last three years have been difficult for providing congregate meals to older adults in those centers, we are happy to see attendance increasing since our centers reopened in June of 2021. As always, meal service is a core focus of the program and the work that they do. Since the reopening of OACs, NYC programs have served nearly 6 million meals to older adults between the congregate meals and the grab-and-go, the temporary grab-and-go meals. Meals provided at OACs are developed to be nutritious and culturally appropriate. Centers and neighborhoods which speak languages other than English or have a predominant cultural need have meals tailored to those individuals who attend those sites. And I'm pleased to say that we also have a pure vegetarian meal option at our centers. This may include meals which are culturally Spanish, Puerto Rican, Caribbean, Asian, and other appropriate meals. We are pleased to see steady increases in the number of meals being served, and the correlation between congregate meals and older adults returning to their older adult clubs. We have seen an average of about 80% in attendance at the OACs at this time for all activities. Providing meals to homebound older adults helps to ensure that their nutritional needs are met, and promotes overall health and ability to live independently in the communities that they help build. Through the network of 14 dedicated home-delivered meals providers, in the most recent full fiscal year 2022, New York City Aging delivered more than 4 million meals to over 26,000 homebound older adults enrolled in this program. In order to qualify for this program, older adults must need specific criteria, such as one, being unable to tend to their daily life activities, are either ill or frail, or have lacked the ability to prepare food for themselves. HDMs function differently than what older adults who attend older adult clubs will see in their congregate services. The HDM program at NYC Aging is connected to services provided by the case management agencies, who perform in-depth assessments of a person's social, psychological, cognitive, and physical well-being to determine their needs. This is a key part of the community care model, and allows older adults to successfully age in place within the communities that they help build. New York City Aging continues to work to expand choices and options that older adults have, and who are in the HDM program, and they can choose the kind of meals that they would prefer, much like OACs, older adults who have culturally specific needs, as kosher, halal, or cultural palate, receive appropriate meals tailored to those requirements. Meals are nutritious, and developed to provide older adults with healthy options when they cannot leave home or are unable to afford food on their own. While dietary restrictions, such as vegan and plant-based options, are not part of the HDM program, individuals who request those types of meal are referred to partner organizations who do provide those meals with those requirements in mind. As you may remember, at the start of the pandemic, NYC Aging quickly transitioned our congregate meal operations to ensure that center members continued to have access to daily meals. We had to do that in less than one week's time. Meal service operations included the grab-and-go model, which proved to be successful in an emergency basis. But as the city locked down, we needed to emerge into another model, and we eventually merged into the city's broader food insecurity initiative called Get Food NYC. While the grab-and-go program has ended as a citywide endeavor, some OACs have chosen to formally include this as part of their programs, to serve their needs of the clients who have temporary emergencies, and so that they can get this need met. For those clients who received grab-and-go meals and are now in need of other arrangements, they have been offered meal services through NYC Aging programs, and as such, returned to the OACs and the HDM programs. While grab-and-go is a viable emergency option, it should not be a default provision, as it does not support the key benefit and purpose of congregate settings, which is to combat social isolation. Additionally, NYC Aging has launched a successful eight-month, 60-plus recovery meal service to help older adults with this transition away from the pandemic responses to food insecurity. At the end of this transitional service, all participating older adults either self-attested to no longer needing meal service, or have identified appropriate means of getting food, either by transitioning back to shopping, attending an OAC, or qualifying for home-delivered meals. Months after the recovery meal service ended, we have not stopped our efforts to ensure vulnerable older adults receive adequate food. New York City Aging has identified older adults who participated in the recovery meals program, but have not yet participated in either of the OACs or within the HDM program. In November of this year, eight New York City Aging distributed postcards to these adults, which were supplemented by outreach calls, to encourage those older adults to attend an OAC and to enjoy congregate meal services. These postcards were delivered in an appropriate language, including English, Spanish, Russian, traditional, and simplified Chinese, Mandarin, Arabic, Polish, and Bengali. We are hopeful that these efforts continue, will continue to connect even more eligible older New Yorkers to the appropriate food resources that they need, and to encourage them to come to OACs. We know that access to meals is a fundamental component of not just stability and health, but also independence and aging in place. Ensuring older adults have access to meals is the foundational work of New York City Aging. We are happy to continue and expand the core component of our network of services. I am proud of the work that NYC Aging and our program of nonprofit providers have done, especially during these challenging and ever-changing times. And because we know that food insecurity is such a great issue, we continue to look at ways of addressing food insecurities beyond the ways that we do now. We've been looking at commissary kitchens and ways of expanding services in that manner, and also expanding the opportunity of choice that older adults have of those meals. Furthermore, these programs, which combat food insecurity, reinforce the key tenants of the Community Care Plan, which, much like OAC congregate meals and HDM meals, prevent institutional admissions, and keep older New Yorkers where they belong, in their communities. I value the partnership that we have with our sister agencies, and that now we have a cabinet for aging New Yorkers, which was established by Mayor Eric Adams, to combat many issues, but food insecurity is one of those issues that we are doing and have successfully integrated into other programs, which provide daily meals. And for that, I thank you, and I'm open to your questions.
All right, thank you for that testimony. I want to just let you know that Chi Ose just joined us via Zoom. Okay, Mike, you said it. I wanted to ask, according to the mayor's office, a food policy, approximately 12.5% 1.4 million of New Yorkers are food insecure. The rate of food insecurity was above the city's average in the Bronx, with 16.4% Brooklyn, with 13.5% in Manhattan, with 12.7% compared, and 9.7% Queens residents, and 8.7% Staten Island residents. How does the city account for the differences by borough, do you think?
How does the city account for the differences in those burrows?
Yes, with food insecurity.
I think that there are a variety of factors that feed into that. There's poverty levels, there's food deserts, and there's a variety of factors that factor into the distinctions between the levels of food insecurity in those.
Are we counting... Do we have a database to see what rate of food among older adults by boroughs?
Please say that again.
What is the rate of food insecurity among older adults by borough?
We monitor food insecurity for older adults by borough, by community district. That is how we assemble all of our data. And what I can assure you is that when we issued both the RFP for older adult clubs, as well as the RFP for home-delivered meals, that was exactly what we looked at. We looked at where was the greatest need, where were the tree communities, what we call the racial communities, have had traditional inequities in those communities? And so we use that as a basis for either expansion or shifting services. So it's something that we constantly monitor, and each borough...
That's what I'm asking. How do you monitor that? Like Staten Island has only 8.7%. Is that due to their income, or the seniors do not go to the senior centers, or do they eat at home? That's why it's very low?
I think there are a variety of factors that surface into food insecurity, and you've mentioned some of them. It's what are the resources available? But income and the social determinants are one of the greatest factors that feed into food insecurity. So the borough rate will distinguish by those other social factors in those communities.
I'm sorry, we just want to acknowledge, Councilmember Marte is here with us also. Thank you for that, but we talked about low food security. Do we have the minimum age is included in these rates? Like if they 75, age 75-plus, or 62 to 65?
No, we do not look at food insecurity by age distinctions. We look at service needs by age distinctions. So it's not just food insecurity. We would look at, you know, a population and see what services are available to them, and where are gaps, and what's needed. But we don't look at food insecurity as a factor for age distinctions. And we do track the age in our home-delivered meals programs, so that we know, okay, how many of them fall into whatever categories.
You do track it. How does this rate compare to the rate pre-pandemic? What is the current rate of food insecurity now to when it was pre-pandemic?
I do not have a rate of food insecurity for older adults overall, for the entire city. We can say that there are 1.4 million people who are food insecure in the city, as you have said. There are many factors that feed into food insecurity. We know at the Department for the Aging, we serve 4 million meals in congregate settings and 6 million meals in home-delivered meals. What we don't have is the balance of food insecurity in the 1.6 million older adults. What we do know, and what we discovered during the pandemic, was there about another 100,000 people who self-identified as food insecure, and then they transitioned off the program. And we had a number of about 22,000 in the recovery meal program, which we surveyed to find out what their food insecurity needs were, and how could those be met? And people self-identified, you know, either they could go back to a home-delivered meals OAC, or they can go to a home-delivered meals program. But we don't have a number of the 1.6 million older New Yorkers, what of those who are food insecure? Because so many factors feed into food insecurity: accessibility, income, location, physical ability.
So we're saying income, does it matter? Because right now, what steps does DIFDA take to identify older adults experiencing food insecurity? What is the relationship between income and access to nutritious food for our older adults? That is, how much of one's income does an older adult spend on food and various income levels in order to be in a program like this with food insecurity?
So I'm going to try to parse out parts of that question, all right? The portion of your income that determines whether you are food insecure or not is not data that I have. We can look at data and see if we can get back to you with some of that. What I can say to you is, we look at, by community district, poverty levels, income levels, accessibility to food resources, to determine where are the needs, where are the communities that have the greatest need, and how could we respond to those needs?
Just a quick follow-up question to that. So, does the city know the average distance a typical older New Yorker lives from free or affordable meals? So for example, we know that every New Yorker lives within 30 minutes of a public library. Do we have a sense of...
Yeah, that was, thank you for that question. We looked at, when we issued the RFP, we looked at, not for all resources, but I'm going to focus it on OACs, which is what we have control over, right? We looked at that a person should not have more than 10 to 15 blocks to be walking to an older adult club. Or can we provide transportation services to get them, which is one of the cases in Staten Island, and certain parts of Queens.
Thank you for that question. How does DIFDA work to address the potential stigma and shame around the food insecurity? How do you make it comfortable for our seniors to come to the senior centers? What outreach do you do?
All right, those are two different questions. We do a lot of outreach. Our local network does a lot of outreach in the community, because as I said, we are serving an average of about 19,000 people at the older adult clubs right now, and we would love that to be up to the pre-pandemic levels.
So that's a question that I asked the last hearing. So what kind of advertisement, or who are you advertising with in regards to getting our seniors back? Instead, I heard you say the postcards. Other than the postcards, what other way are you reaching out? Do you have a budget for this?
The answer to the last one is, no, there's no budget. We have to use it from within our existing budget.
Really?
Yeah. We have, there's not a specific advertising budget. We have... We have, with our partner agencies, they conduct a variety of outreach. Some of those are calls, some of those are special events, some of those are flyers, some of that is poster boards. We joined, we had an extensive multimedia campaign called Join Us that we did on subways, radio, television, postcards, social media, just to keep getting the word out there that these older adult clubs are there and available for older New Yorkers. As for the stigma and the shame, everyone and anyone can come into an older adult club. We do not ask you your income or any of those kind of questions. You can come in and you can avail yourself of a nutritious meal, regardless of income and regardless of standing, okay?
Okay, with your home-delivered meals and case management. Last year, with the end of the DIFDA Recovery Meals Emergency Food Program, a rampant of the Get Food program set up during the pandemic, the city allocated funding for home-delivered meals and case management programs. How many older adults receive meals through that recovery program?
The recovery program, Get Food, older adults, I think at one point the number was about 110,000, in addition to the 110 additional. I'll get you the exact numbers of that because I don't want to go on the record with an erroneous number. So it was the program, it was all of the older adults that were part of the OACs as well as the individuals who raised their hand and said that they were food insecure. I will give you that number. When that program ended, we had a program for older adults specifically called Recovery Meals. That program served over, I think it started out with 22,000, and then at the end of that program, there were 11,000 people. And of those individuals, we kept surveying them to make sure that they had means for food insecurity responses. That was either, and many of them said that they could resume shopping, resume their regular life, some went to older adult clubs. Some were referred to home-delivered meals and opted not to because they didn't want to do the assessment. And remember, many of these people were never involved with government, and so this was their first experience. So we've transitioned. 2,218 clients were identified that they were able to shop for groceries and food for themselves. 398 clients were transitioned to OACs. 616 clients were able to get help from a friend and family member or caregiver. 3,800 were referred to case management agencies for assessment. 1,295 ultimately were enrolled in the HDM program. So that was a data-rich answer to your question.
I know, they said they're going to follow up with your administration. One thing, when you become a senior, 62 now, right?
60.
60?
62, you are eligible for 62 marks for some programs. It all depends, it depends on the program. You know, for senior employment, it's 55. For MTA, it's 65. For reduced fares at MTA, for older adult clubs under, older adult services under the Department for the Aging, it's 60. So it really depends.
Yeah, because the home-delivered meal is 60 years old. Is this age eligible for other food assistance programs? Because at one point, when a senior asks, it was 65, you had to be 65 and up in order to get in some of the senior programs. And when I saw 60 years old, I just said, I wanted to ask you.
Yeah, no, that's a perfect question.
Thank you.
For New York City Aging Services, it's 60-plus, with the exception of the Senior Employment Program, which is 55.
Thank you, I didn't know that.
And that's because of age biases in the workforce.
In which we have to change. How can we change that? Okay, I'm going to leave off for some other questions, maybe. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Crystal Hudson, for her questioning.
Thank you, Chair Mealy. So what is the current rate of food insecurity among older adults in New York City?
You know, we try to assess the range of food and meal services through our congregate meals and our home-delivered meals, as well as through the farmer nutrition program that we have. And also by completing SNAP applications. So we look, and looking at food pantries. We know that the tree neighborhoods represent areas of the city where individuals both need more social service and also have greater difficulty accessing those services. For home-delivered meals, we look very carefully at tree neighborhoods to represent the majority of our clients. I believe that more than 50% of our clients receiving home-delivered meals live in tree communities. So it's something that we're constantly looking at. But if I can't give you an actual rate, I can tell you that 50, 50.6% of the people receiving home-delivered meals live in tree communities. And I can give you a good number and a good guesstimate of the older adult clubs.
Okay, thank you. And then, so that minimum age, just to confirm, is 60?
Yes.
And then, do you know, do you have a sense of how this rate compares to the rate pre-pandemic?
Well-
Like, and, yeah, just-
I was going to say, you know, not having a good handle on the rate to begin with, but all I can tell you is that, given our experience with the pandemic, we have seen a greater need, and you saw the numbers, and home-delivered meals increased considerably. We went from 19, and there's 26,000 people receiving home-delivered meals now. So we've seen that there has been an increase. But I don't have a rate that I can give you specifically.
Okay, and then, does DIFDA have, or NYC Aging, excuse me, does NYC Aging have statistics that reflect changes in demand for food assistance by older adults in the past year?
All I can, the, say that again, I don't know.
Do you have statistics that reflect changes in demand for food assistance for older adults in the past year? So I know you just ran through-
Yeah.
The- The-
Recovery meal-
Recovery meals and where people are now, but essentially, do you have any specific statistics that reflect changes in demand? So I wouldn't necessarily say that the numbers you rattled off earlier are-
We know-
Numbers reflective of demand.
We know that, we know that there is an increased demand for home-delivered meals. We are working on meeting what we believe pre-pandemic levels at older adult clubs, which is the enhanced Join Us campaign and other activities to get those programs fully operational and fully at maximum service levels. So it's hard to determine the demand for congregate meals when we see that the older adult clubs are still not at full participation. And it's something that we're constantly monitoring.
Okay, so as, just as a follow-up, City Harvest, for example, says that there's a 36% increase in demand from the pandemic. So are we delivering or serving 36% more meals than pre-pandemic?
No, no. We're serving more home-delivered meals, but not in older adult clubs.
Okay, thank you.
But that is not to say that that number does not reflect what the food insecurity and the demand might be out there. There, you know, the Department for the, the New York City Aging, look at that, even I do it still. New York City Aging, we serve a small portion of the 1.6 million-
Right.
-older adults. So it is constantly trying to assess what are the needs of that other population that we don't serve.
Okay. Can you describe the nutritional needs of older adults and how city-funded meal programs meet those needs?
Well, the nutritional needs for older adults, or the nutritional requirements for older adults, I don't know if it's needs, because if I were to eat what I needed rather than what I'm required, I would, well, it's a different story. But the nutritional requirements for older adults are set by the FDA and the Department of Agriculture. And then SOFA, the State Office on Aging, also has some requirements that we have to meet. And we have a core of nutritionists who work very closely with our older adult clubs and our home-delivered meals providers to make sure that those nutritional standards are met. Not only do they look at nutritional standards, they look at health and safety standards and the conditions of those operations.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there a home-delivered meal waitlist?
There is now. This is the first time that we've experienced a home-delivered meals waitlist. When we last reported to you, I believe we said it was about 164. Now that number is 61, but it's something that we're looking at very, very closely.
So it's gone down from 164 to 60?
It's gone down because program capacity has declined.
So 60 what, 61?
It's about 61.
Okay, thank you. And what's the waitlist for a full case management assessment?
I have those answers for you. Where are the waitlist answers? I have those, I read those last night, so I know I have them. Okay, we're going to get back to you on those waitlist numbers because-
Okay.
All right? And we'll give you, we will give you the waitlist numbers by service. Case management, home-delivered meals, older adult clubs, and I believe there's one more, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you have a question? Councilwoman Mealy?
Hello, Commissioner, good morning.
Great, thank you.
So, quick question, sorry, I have a few questions. So as you mentioned, I know the utilization rates are still not where they were pre-pandemic with a lot of the OACs. And so I was just wondering for, I know it technically, correct me if I'm wrong, but it technically, the grab-and-go meals technically were not part of the new RFP, but if certain OACs still prefer to do that, especially because seniors, older adults still don't feel completely safe coming in for congregate meals, would that still be an option for a lot of the older adult centers if they wanted to keep that?
So we did build grab-and-go into the RFP.
Okay, so the new RFP, okay.
So some programs, as I said in the testimony, some programs chose that option to include it in their proposal.
Okay.
You know, because you always have that older adult club that goes to the hospital and needs meals when they come out for five or six days before they can come back to the center. So that, so there's always that opportunity. However, other people did not opt for that.
Opt for that, okay.
Right, and so if you didn't opt for that, it's, you know, it's not part of your program.
Okay. And then for the case management, because I know that for the homebound delivery meals, you have to go through the case management agencies. And I'm so sorry for forgetting the timeline for that RFP, but was that already issued, or is that coming up in the following fiscal year? For the new, for the new case management?
Yeah, the case management? It's, it's a- It was issued mid- Oh, it will be issued mid-December.
Okay, got it, got it. And do you have any sense, because I mean, obviously, this was after I left KCS already, but do you have a sense of if the RFPs for the case management agencies were a bit more expanded? Meaning, I know that the requirement to qualify for the case management agencies is pretty high. And so in light of what's happening with the fact that there are probably going to, especially in the next like five, 10 years, there's going to be a lot more older adults that need services, and so I was just wondering.
So I want you to know that you were in my head throughout that RFP, which is why I thought it was issued. I've reviewed that RFP so much. You were in my head about that. And if you remember, in the last time that I testified, we were a little disappointed that the case management agencies chose not to subcontract with other providers so that they can extend services to communities of color and tree communities, and we were very disappointed by that. So what we've done is taken two approaches, all right? Very much in response to that question you asked me, I think a year ago, which is, we looked at, as a pilot, we have selected, I think, five or seven older adult clubs who have what we call enriched case assistance, who are in communities of color, who are community of color providers traditionally. And we're piloting with them a program called Case Assistance 1 Point Whatever.
Okay.
And we're helping them during this transition period, prepare themselves so that they can qualify and compete and have good standing for the case management program when the RFP comes out, and they'll have enough rich experience. So all of that to say is that we hear what you say in these hearings, and we try to incorporate that in our service plans.
That's awesome. So it's almost like a look-alike and then preparing them as, using this as a stepping stone to perhaps then qualify for it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, oh, okay, that's good.
It was the same way we did with the OACs when we took all of those discretionary community of color groups, gave them technical assistance-
Like COPO, yes.
So that they can then qualify for the RFP when the OAC RFP came out. We did exactly, I'm telling you, you were in our head, you were in my head. And so that's exactly what we did with the case management.
Awesome.
All right? Oh, by the way, can I just respond to Chair Hudson? I have some numbers for you. I know I read them last night. Home-delivered meals, the waitlist is 61. Home care, the waitlist is 277 people, and I hope we can address that later. And case management, right now, it's 1,742 on the, waiting for the second assessment.
Sorry, the case management number was what, 1,000?
The case management, 1,742.
Thank you.
And this model in the case management agency, RFP now, we think may help address some of that by incorporating new partners into it. And the, for your, can I jump back to, okay. And for the pilot, we're doing it with KCS, COPO, RISES, Hamilton-Madison, and SHOP. The enhanced case assistance, whatever we're calling it, I forgot the real name. But that's, all right. So that they could qualify for when the RFP comes out.
Oh, that's good to know. Thank you for that. And more budget-related question. Because I think in the November budget mod, it looks like there are supposed to be cuts of about 4.3 million to the case management services. And so how, if you could just describe to us how that's going to impact the programming, how it relates to spending? And also, just given all the cost of inflation with food, you know, food inflation costs and raw food costs and everything that keep going up, how can we sort of, you know, other than obviously throwing money at the situation? Like, how do we, how do we help with that?
So for HDM, if you recall, we have $60 million for our home-delivered meals. Of that, I believe there were $2 million in '21 to address the food increase to $10.58. And then we had additional money for '22, which increased the food cost for $11.11 something cents. So that we were addressing some of that, so it mitigates it a bit in home-delivered meals. That is not to say that it answers it all. The unfortunate silver lining in the OACs is that because we're not at full capacity, there is an ability, although we're being very careful not to allow too much money to be diverted. It has to stay within food, because we don't want other, you know, anything to take away from food security. So that, you know, is a- So that, you know, is a temporary response, but we work closely with OMB on these issues.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could let us know how that's impacting, so that we can then know how to respond and, and support in other ways, that would be great.
Yeah, so it, so, so just for your, for your, for your information, inflation has affected us in three ways, right? It's gas.
Yep.
It's food costs, right? And then it's, it's access to stuff because of supply chains. So we've had, you know, those kind of three challenges.
Okay. And then also, just one last question, I'm sorry, about the SNAP benefits. So I know that a lot of the older adults in, in, for example, my district may be eligible for SNAP but are not necessarily taking advantage of it, so are there ways that you and I can partner on this to, or not just me, but obviously all of our council members, right, in our districts, like, are there programs that you have, or, you know, how can New York City Aging partner with our offices to help us do the outreach to our older adults? Because I know that the ones who are going to the OACs are already being reached, but then outside of that, how do we?
So, thank you for that question, because I'm gonna, I might amend that request for assistance. So, we would welcome partnership with your offices on both getting the word out about SCREE, because only 50% of the people are eligible for SCREE, and if you, if your rent gets frozen, then you have more money, and then you can deal with your food insecurity, right? And then we would also welcome your partnership with SNAP. I would, I, at this point, I would like to give a great shout-out to our mayor, who is looking at this thing called MyCity, which would be a game-changer for all of us, which is a universal application process, where people who will automatically be eligible will be deemed eligible, and then will have either options to, to opt out, but that is exactly the vision that we have. Make every, we know who's eligible, enroll them, and then let themselves select out if they don't want the benefit, rather than spend all the money on outreach.
Is that, is that just an idea that was proposed, or do you know if it's actually going to happen?
It's not an idea.
Is it gonna?
It's, you know, as we, as this administration says, get stuff done. It is being very actively looked at with the CTO.
Okay.
For other, it's going to start with a group of agencies, but we're looking at all of those benefits.
Okay.
And we have the Aging Cabinet, which also accelerates that conversation.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple of more questions. How much is, how much in the new federal stimulus funding has DIFDA received?
I'll get back to you on the actual amount of the, of.
Is there any money left from the last two years, when the pandemic?
There's some, there's some stimulus money left. I, I'll get you, but like everyone in the city and in the nation, when the stimulus money dries out, it's a, it's, it's an issue we all have to manage. I can get you the amount of stimulus dollars that we receive, and what is available, but we know that by 2025 or 2026, 2025, there, you know, that stimulus money will no longer be available.
So you know you're going to receive some next year, 2023?
We've received what we're going to receive.
You don't know how much is that?
No, I don't, I don't have that with me right now, I, I commit to getting that to you.
So, what is your plan when you do receive that? The, well, what is your plans for that resources, those funds?
We've used much of that, we've used much, much of that money for our expansion, for our community care plan, for several other things.
Your community care plan?
Mm-hmm.
What is that? Explain that a little?
It, the community care plan is the five-year strategic plan that we built so that we could increase our community-based services, which is where we're talking about the home-delivered meals, the, you know, the older adult clubs, and all of those services.
Okay. I'm going to question a few, you said that the RFP, the case assistance programs, do you feel any of those pilot, not pilot, but other organizations will become a full older adult center? Like the adult centers that are not centers, that they are now serving our seniors food? And you just spoke.
We don't, if, if you're asking, will we be able to expand or issue an RFP for older adult centers?
Yes, you said you have the, this RFP for case assistance programs, you will be.
Case management, case management services are separate and apart from older adult clubs, right?
Yes.
And what, what, the conversation that I was having with Councilmember Lee a few seconds ago, was about case management and getting older adult clubs who have always had a rich case ma, case assistance program on a pilot basis to get them to, give them some services and technical support, so that they will be eligible to apply for the case management RFP.
That's, well, will any of these clubs you feel can now look forward to becoming a full older adult center, the adult clubs?
They are older adult clubs now. They can look forward to it, to technical assistance, and apply and compete for case management ser, to become a case management operator.
Oh, compete for, okay.
The other way around, Councilmember Lee.
That's it, okay, thank you for that.
All right, great.
Okay, you explained that one to me. Will DIFDA continue to allow grab-and-go meals for their centers that prefer? It is an option, even if they did not include them as a planned activity in the last RFP?
It is something that we're constantly looking at, because we're still in this, you know, new reality, but it is something that we do not encourage, because it goes against, it's, it's, it's an excellent emergency service, right? It's an excellent option for emergency. But we try not to encourage it, because, one, we want the centers to be fully operational, and we want people to participate, which is, by coming to the center, you are in a congregate setting and you're socializing. So the whole purpose is to combat social isolation. So that's the goal.
Okay, thank you. I'm turning, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So in what, this is just going back to data collection for a second. In what ways does NYC Aging collect data that identifies food insecurity, and how does NYC Aging define food insecure?
That's a great question. We collect data by, we collect data from our own, from our own clients, we collect data from the, from the participants, we collect data from the home-delivered meals clients, we look at data from all of the other services that we provide that are not OACs or HDM, and that is what we look at. How we define food insecurity is the inability, simple inability, it's access or affordability.
The inability to access, what did you say? The inability to access?
Inability or access.
Oh, got it.
Right. And income.
Does NYC Aging have tools available to determine other demographics of food insecure folks it serves, like race, gender, et cetera?
Yeah. We serve, you know, all eligible participants equally and rely on self-reported data to give a picture of the demographics of our clients. And, and whenever we conduct a survey, we do the exact same thing, that people self-identify. And we, I, you know, it's, it's gender, race, ethnicity, LGBTQ, 65-plus, living alone, those are kind of like the data elements that we look at, that then we could extrapolate, you know, certain conditions.
Okay, that's helpful. And then just going to, back to the budget and finance a little bit, the November budget modification included a $4.3 million cut to case management services. And, excuse me, I have a cough drop in my mouth, so.
That's okay.
What specifically is this cut impacting?
Let me, I'm going to consult with my staff, because I don't believe that there is a cut. Yeah, it, there, there was a delay in amending the contract, so those were the savings that we had, so there's not a.
Delay in a Medicaid contract, you said?
Amending contracts, so it's a cost savings, which then was taken, taken back, so it's not a cut in services.
Okay, so, this does, does this then relate to the pending RFP for case management programs, or no?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. So, the $4.3 million is a cost savings?
Is a cost savings, right? And, let me ask Jose if that's the correct terminology.
Okay.
Is, can I call, call it a savings?
Yes, I can call it a savings.
Okay.
Because it was money allocated that was not used, and then retreated, all right? So it didn't impact services.
But might you have a use for that money?
When we're facing cuts, we try to do, find funding where we do not have to impact services. And if that's a model, then that was.
So, I just want to state this for the record, that my concern is that we have a booming older adult population, and the NYC Aging budget is one of the smallest, if not the smallest, of all city agencies, there's, it's the smallest capital budget, I mean, we, you have no money. So, a $4.3 million savings, I would argue, could be used for clearing case management waitlists, you know, other, other things that are greatly needed.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's part of looking at the economic situation of the city. I, I agree with you, everything that you have said for the record. That said, in our partnership with OMB, it's constantly looking at how to position ourselves, you know, and also what the economic situation is in the city.
Yeah, I mean, I would just argue that the, the economic situation is only going to become more dire when we have a greater population of older adults, and then fewer services and resources, and again, just for the record, there are other agencies with far greater budgets, and bloated budgets, I would argue, that could sustain cuts that I think Aging cannot, so.
Thank you for your supportive advocacy.
Okay. All right, so just confirming the $4.3 million is not, in your view, a cut. Do you have an estimate of how many people who were previously receiving congregate meals before the pandemic transitioned to home-delivered meals due to mobility or cognitive challenges or other personal issues?
I wasn't, I'm sorry.
Let me repeat that.
Yeah.
Do you have an estimate of how many people who were previously receiving congregate meals before the pandemic transitioned to home-delivered meals due to mobility or cognitive challenges or other personal issues? So you gave us some of the numbers earlier about.
I gave you that for recovery meals, but I don't have the transition number from, from OACs to HDM.
Okay.
I'll get that to you.
Okay.
We have that number.
Okay. And then if you, if it's possible, we'd be curious to know also specifically due to mobility or cognitive challenges or other, or other sort of like personal issues, or maybe things that came up specifically.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll ask the case management agency to categorize them by those factors.
That would be helpful. Can you just confirm also, going back to the, the $4.3 million, was there meant to be an expansion?
Will there be an expansion?
The, the $4.3 million that you're saying was a cost savings? Was there meant to be, hold on a second. Yeah. Right. That was a one-time, remove. Right, I thought so. Okay, sorry about that, just needed to make sure I had my numbers right. So, there was supposed to be, I believe, a $3 million expansion of case management at adoption?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not happening?
The, that's not happening, but I, I want to be clear that the $4.1 million savings is a one-time factor. You know, it doesn't get carried over, over and over again, our budget.
I have 4.3, but is it 4.1?
4.3, 4.3. No, you got the right number. That was a one-time, you know, sweep. In other words, then it, everything else restored, you know, in subsequent budgets.
Mm-hmm. But the, but you're saying that the, the $3 million is part of that, or is not part of that?
Probably was part of that. Can I get back to you, and give you the clear answer on that?
Yeah, but it seems like he has the answer now.
Yeah. Tell me. Oh, you're not sworn in, you can. I'll get back to you on that. All right, I'll give you, I'll give you a very clear answer on that.
Okay. Do you want to swear him in?
Jose.
You want to, you want to be sworn in, Jose?
Jose, let's, you can be sworn in, Jose. Nope. No, he wants to clarify, he wants to get you the right answer.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
All right, that's.
It is not a, it's not a delayed tactic, it's really an accuracy tactic.
I, listen, I'm.
We got to give you the respect that.
I got it. And, and, you know, we're, we're putting Jose on the spot, so I get it, it's, it's all good, and apologies, that wasn't the intent, but. Okay, so yes, if we can just get some, some follow-up on that and where the numbers are, that would be helpful.
And when you, when you, we'll get, give us the precise answer that you want, so we can give you the correct answer, all right?
Okay, we will.
And you want the distinction between the 3 million and the four point, and the four point.
We'll include that in, in the follow-up.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
I just have one question, and then I turn it back over to my colleague. Have any older adult centers expressed a need for infrastructure improvements such as havoc systems upgrades or air? I can't say it. Liberation systems, which would help older adults feel safer, safer in congregate settings?
We have a whole unit that works with the older adult clubs and looking at their needs, and we also have.
Have any of the centers requested it?
Oh, we have a long list of requests of repairs, as well as HVAC issues. We have $4 million dedicated to HVAC and all of those issues, and we do that on a, on a much-needed, on, at, as needed, and also prioritize those that are emergencies. If you know that replacing and repairing HVAC system height is extremely costly, and so we have a four-point, a $4 million budget for that.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to know.
Yeah.
And I'll acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Dinowitz. Okay, utilization rates are still not back up to pre-pandemic levels at many OACs, including for their congregate meal programs, in large part due to persistent public health fears from older adults about attending congregate activities. As we head into the depths of winter, older adults are particularly vulnerable to the triple threat of flu, COVID, and RSV. I know that my colleague, Chair Mealy, just asked one question related to this, but how is DIFDA currently working with OACs to assess the utilization rates of centers and congregate meals?
We are working.
We are working with them regularly. It's one of the topics that I bring up in my monthly meetings with providers. It's one of the concerns that we look at. And I look at it for, from two perspectives. I look at it from the needs of the older adults and the concern about social isolation and the impact that that may have long-term. I look at it in terms of, if, if not older adult clubs, what can we come up with as modalities where we can still deal with food insecurity and social isolation? So it's not just like a grab and go. We're looking, we look at things like commissary kitchens. Maybe we could have more programs providing more meals so that people can have choices. We're always looking at what the next step should be in terms of making sure that older adults get food. But then I look at it from a public policy perspective. And I get, so I want to be ahead of the curve before an oversight agency, you know, beyond us, at the federal level or the state level says, maybe this model doesn't work or we should not fund to this level. That's another concern that is constantly weighing on me as we're looking at underutilization at older adult clubs.
Thank you. You sure? Is there any indication about why some OACs have higher utilization than others?
I think it's, I think it's a combination of, there's so many factors as to why older adults are not coming out in this new reality. You have family members who are prohibiting you from going out, that you have your own concerns. Every time you think that there's a, a new normalcy coming back, you know, we have a spike or there's news around flu and a new variant, and all of those things affect us. It also is, you know, the, each older adult club is its own entity and has its own outreach methods and its own recruitment opportunities. So all of those weigh into why some are, have a higher participation rate than others. I, that's why we did the Join Us campaign, which was to get the word out there, not only for the older adult, but also for family members, to let them know that those older adult clubs are okay, they're safe. We're also, you know, going back to, you know, using our guidance, never going away from the pandemic guidance, you know, all of us, with the exception of me, but I walked in with my mask, are wearing masks wisely. And so those are the things that we continue to encourage.
So I'm just going to ask this question for the record, but I, I believe that you just answered it. Do OACs follow some kind of standard protocol for the safety precautions they take to reduce the risk of exposure to COVID, flu, and other airborne viruses?
Yeah, we, we have the guidance out there and, and we strongly encourage the use of masks and the other guidance that we've put out there.
And then is there any particular way that OACs are informing older adults of these measures that they're taking to create safe, healthy, and sanitary environments? They have things like, you know, posted up? Are they just communicating with people once they come into the centers? Or how is that actually being communicated?
I think, I think it's, it goes back to my, my previous answer. So it depends on the older adult club, that they each have a different approach in the way they're communicating the information. But I think all of us are, are creating a cacophony of, of, of a message, which is, we are safe, we are open, we are available, join us.
And do you know or can you confirm if OACs are adhering to indoor masking per the Health Commissioner's recommendation? And it sounds like you're, you're supportive of that?
Yeah, we, we, we strongly encourage masking, although we've never had a mask mandate. The guidance says that we strongly encourage.
Okay.
We did have a mask mandate, I'm sorry, I was, I, I corrected myself and then I looked back to confirm. But right now, it's, 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 it's strongly encouraged.
Okay.
Edgar, you want to give me a note? Right.
Okay. And then what's, what's been the biggest barrier or challenge that aging has identified in the daily participation rate of OACs?
I think fear, fear and insecurity, you know, or the ability to adapt to this new reality. You know, those are the factors.
Thank you. I just also want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Lynn Schulman. And Councilmember Dinowitz, I believe, has a question or two. Go for it.
Is it afternoon yet? No, good morning, Commissioner, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Hope you're doing well. I, I have a, I think it's the third hearing in a row. I'm going to ask a similar question to what I've asked before, which is, I guess you call it a cabinet, how's the cabinet going? And the reason I'm, the reason I'm asking is because in previous hearings, I've asked a question that just asks, can the government, you know, kind of talk to itself? And so, for example, when you have intake forms at an older adult center, and are you asking about income? And then as a result, are you sharing that information with the Department of Finance or relevant agencies to help, as a government entity, help older adults sign up for whatever benefits to which they're entitled? We've spoken before about Mitchell Lamas, city-run Mitchell Lamas, and that income affidavit, having the income and the age on it, is that being shared with the Department of Finance? I suggested prefilled that SCREE applications being sent to those residents. I sense by a smile on your face, there's something moving, but there's a lot of instances, veterans too, veteran question on the intake form, and then actually something happening by the government subsequent to that, to, to actually make life just easier, to make, to make it easier to actually sign up for those benefits without having to go through a whole nother process, asking for the same exact information again.
So I believe that when government talks to itself, it's a great day because we're not operating in silos. And I applaud this cabinet, so I know that you agree with me on that. The work of the cabinet so far, this is weird, like, we just had our second meeting of the cabinet, but the work groups have worked all along, and it's all of the things that you talked about. How is it that we share information? How is it that we make ease of access to applications and to services? How is it that we can have a universal form or process? You know, so that people don't have to apply for SCREE and SNAP, all of them which have so, the similar kind of requirements? So it is that conversation, and then there's more, which is what gratifies me so much, is we look at, what are the policies? What are the funding structures? You know, like, why is it that so much of the funding is geared towards long-term care and not community care? Can we, you know, so we look, we're looking at all of those kind of policy and, and and questions so that people can live in the communities if they have the proper supports. They're healthier, 90% of people choose to live in their, in their respective homes rather than be institutionalized. So we're looking at, as a cabinet, all of those questions. And I know that we're on to something, as many agencies keep approaching us to say, can we be in the cabinet? Because we selected the 17 that we thought had the greatest impact on, on older adult life, you know, how, and tackling the big issues, housing, health, all of those, you know, finance, looking at security, public safety.
Yeah.
Big partnership with the Police Department on that.
And you know how much we both care about SCREE?
And we both care about SCREE.
And, you know, it's encouraging to hear that these meetings are happening. In those meetings has, have goals or timelines been set up? And in other words, can we expect at this time next year that a person who goes to an older adult center and, and puts, checks off that they're a veteran and, and puts in their income, that this time next year, they'll, they'll get, automatically get SNAP form filled out for them in the mail, or the social worker will take them to the computer and fill out everything for them? I mean, what can we expect and what is the timeline?
You can expect aggressive movement towards that. The CTO and the, you know, that is what the goal is, right? Can I promise you that by this time next year, that will all be complete? No, I don't, I don't have enough
So that's not what I really meant. My, my question is, have you sent, set up a timeline, like an internal timeline or goal? Has there been goal setting?
We have a timeline for June, which I will be talking to you more about. We have a timeline for June to see some projects, you know, movement, great movement on certain projects. We have some longer-term visions. We are hoping to present some of the findings of the cabinet and the action. This is an action plan cabinet, this is not a white paper think tank. This is about putting things in place so that we could really make this an age-inclusive city.
Yeah, the truth is, I would mostly like to come back at some hearing and ask a different question. That's my, that's my call.
You know what I will do for you? I will give you an update, and Kate, and my staff will kill me right now. I will give you an update on the, on some of the projects that we have.
Who's Kate?
She's not here.
Oh, you pointed to her like she's
I thought she was here, but
Me too, I pointed at someone who's not Kate.
I promised to give the Aging Committee an update on what we're looking at in the Aging Cabinet, all right? And, but it's an update and a vision for where we expect to go, all right? We can give that to you now.
Appreciate that, that's all, thank you.
And you will keep asking me the questions, because they will always, this will always
You know I'm going to keep asking, but I don't know why I said I'm going to stop asking. I'm going to keep asking the question.
Okay, I have one question about the food pantries and the soup kitchens. Describe how DIFTA partner with the food banks and the soup kitchens across the city to provide assistance to food insecure older adults.
You know, the way I can best answer that is to say that we have a network of 308 older adult clubs out there.
How do you tell an older adult, well, you could go to this food kitchen, they have hot food, like, every other Wednesday, in front of my office, I do hot food. So how do DIFTA relate to the seniors telling them where to go? Do y'all have other bulletin boards to let them know?
So, so that was what I was, I was going to get to. Each older adult center throughout the city has relationships with a myriad of community service providers in the, in their community. And, and they are the ones that exchange programs and service information about each other to each other. If there is a particular program that you would like us to share information with, you know, we will be more than happy to do that. But there, I, I trust and I have a lot of confidence in the network of nonprofits and the relationships that they have built in their community to make sure that people are familiar with and can avail themselves of other services in that community.
I'm going to turn it over, she's going to have the last questions, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Does DIFTA, does aging currently have, excuse me, does aging have current data on how many older adults in New York City are relying on food banks and soup kitchens for at least some of their meals?
No, we don't. And I don't even know that I can get you that data. We can probably give you a sense of that, but
Okay.
All right, I can give you how many of our programs have food pantries and, and, and other kind of services within their own operation. I can give you that.
Okay, that would, that's, that's helpful. Do OACs advertise neighborhood food banks and soup kitchens or refer food insecure older adults to those facilities? Which is, I think, some of what you just addressed.
They do, they have, you know, it's like, they do that on a community basis.
Okay. And then just the last, last few here.
Okay.
Just for the record, how many older adults received meals through the Recovery Meals Program?
The initial number was about 22,000 towards the end of the program that we stayed in contact with to make sure that they were well-positioned to address their food insecurity was 11,000. And those are the numbers I gave you earlier.
Earlier, yeah. Okay. Have all of the former Recovery Meals clients been screened for home-delivered meals and SNAP?
They've been screened, they've, they've
I know there've been shifts.
They've been identified and told that they were eligible for home-delivered meals. And I gave you the number
And what about SNAP? Yeah, you, you gave me the number for, HDM was 1,295?
Right, right.
But what about SNAP?
I don't have a number for SNAP, but I was Oh, I see. They might not be eligible for, for SNAP, but they've been contacted and informed about it.
Okay. What's the status of the funds the city has invested for home-delivered meals and case management programs in FY '23? And has that money been spent or allocated yet?
We have $60 million for home-delivered meals. And I don't know the number for case, for, for, for OACs. I'll get, how much?
Okay, and then what about
5 million? Okay, yeah, 60 million on, on home-delivered meals, I'll get back to you on OACs.
Okay, and then
And we'll, and we'll separate it from OACs and NORCs. Or do you want that distinction, or you just want it one large, one
Distinction would be great. We could take both of the
All right, we'll give it to you both ways.
Okay, hold on one second.
I do have the number of the amount of stimulus dollars.
Oh, that's good.
Okay, if you want that, I, I had omitted that before, because I, I didn't find that page. But I know I, I believe the number is 84 million.
This is
Stimulus.
The stimulus for FY '22, '23, or '24?
We received a total of 84 million dollars.
84 million across which fiscal years?
Yeah, for stimulus dollars. All of that was for FY '22.
For FY '22, okay. Can you describe how the money was spent in FY '22?
That was the number we said that we would get back to you on
Okay.
Earlier. That was the, yeah, there was the whole thing about Jose testified
Right, 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 okay, okay, thank you. Okay, I'm just going to skip around for a second, if you don't mind.
No.
Do you know the status of the 60 million dollars? I think maybe it's now 68 million dollars of funding for workforce enhancement for human services workers?
Yes, we, we received our allocation. And that allocation was distributed to the nonprofits.
And sorry, is that 60 or 68 million?
It was 60 million for the entire city. Citywide, it was 60 million for the workforce enhancement. 68 million citywide, and our portion was what?
68, and it's been sent to the providers.
And Department, New York City Aging, got 4 million. And we distributed that to the, to the older, to the whole network, frankly. In addition to that
So do you know that those, the network has actually, they've confirmed a receipt? Yeah?
Yes. We also addressed Jose's going to give me bird mind back in my head. We also addressed salary in the case management agencies because of the delay. We also addressed the salary, salary increases. Because as you know, salary parity is a real concern for New York City Aging, because we lose staff to other agencies. And so we've increased the salaries for case man, for specific titles in the case management portfolio.
Just going back really quickly to the cabinet Just going back really quickly to the cabinet question from Councilmember Dinowitz. Does the Mayor's Office of Food Policy attend the cabinet meetings?
Does the what?
Mayor's Office of Food Policy attend those cabinet meetings?
No.
Okay, it might be helpful to have them address maybe some issues on older adult food insecurity.
So that, that said, they don't, they might, they do attend some of the, the, the work groups. So the cabinet is for commissioners, all right? So in the work groups, food policy, and we've just been meeting with Kiara Mickey from the urban agriculture to really come up with some ways to collaborate. So they're part of the work groups, but they, okay?
Okay, great. Just give me one second, sorry.
We put the twenty-first on my calendar. We put the twenty-first on my calendar.
Okay, thanks for your. Thanks for your patience, sorry. I'm just trying to, to sort of, I guess, assess and figure out there seems to be a greater need than, you know, we're addressing. So as far as like home delivered meals, case management, things like that, how do you sort of?
We know, and we've always known, and we continuously say, that needs outpace resources. You've, you, you went on the record to identify how and in your, in your opinion. It is a constant conversation that we have with OMB and work with OMB to really address, you know, our new needs. They recognized our new needs last year when we looked at home delivered meals and gave us the increases necessary. So it's a constant conversation that we have in our partnership with OMB to address these, these issues.
Okay, thank you.
And being said, there's, you know, there's a economic reality out there that we're, we're, we're part of that conversation too.
Right. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have. Chair Mealy?
I just have one. You said the waiting list went down to sixty-one. What is the contributing factor you think why that list went down?
When we, why we have a waiting list now that we did not have before? When we had recovery meals, recovery meals, when someone was identified food insecure, they immediately got a recovery meal. So there was a default. With the, with the, with the elimination or the ending of that program, that provision is not there. All right? And so right now, it is when the home delivered meals provider has the capacity. All right? And so that's what we are, that's what we're, we're dealing with. And, you know, the need may be here, let's say in South Bronx, but the capacity availability might be in Brooklyn. So there's a lot of factors that weigh into how is it that we can address that?
Okay, my colleague's gonna have the last question.
Very last, I'm sorry. I just was looking through your testimony and I remembered that I had a question from here. You mentioned, and I'll, I'll just quote your, your testimony here. "In recent weeks, OACs is a call category to Aging Connect. NYC Aging's in-house contact center has increased since the start of the campaign and we're hopeful this is a sign of increased attendance at our centers," end quote. I'm just curious to know if you, by how much of an increase that's been, if you have that number?
That's, we're looking at that right now. That is something that we're trying to determine. We know that there's been a lot of inquiry. We, what we don't have is the data is what, how does that translate into actual participation at the local level?
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
We want to thank you, Commissioner, for attending this important hearing, looking forward to the data coming back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And if I don't see you, I wish you all a happy and safe holiday.
Same to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we're going to be moving on to public testimony. As a reminder, written testimony can be submitted up to seventy-two hours following the hearing. So we're going to be taking people who are in person first and then we will, we will be moving on to people testifying on Zoom. So just to call up the first panel here. We have Loretta Wilson and Donna Coles from Greenwich House and Brianna Payton-Williams from Levon, New York and Tara Klein from United Neighborhood Houses.
Could you come sit at the table, please? And we could start.
And Loretta, we can, is, Loretta's here? Okay. Okay, so Donna Coles, you can, we can start with you. Great, thank you. Please proceed.
Donna Coles, and I am the Assistant Director of Westbeth Older Adult Center at Greenwich House. Thank you, Chair Hudson, Chair Mealy, and fellow city council members for this opportunity to testify. Since Greenwich House was founded a hundred and twenty years ago, we have been committed to addressing the needs of New Yorkers of all ages through arts and education programs, health services, and older adult services. Greenwich House is proud to operate a network of five older adult centers in Manhattan, offering our members vital social, educational, physical, and cultural resources. We applaud the committees for seeking opportunities to address food insecurity among older adults, which is a challenge we see every day at Westbeth and across our network. The impact of inflation for older adults is undeniable, undeniable. Eleven percent of New Yorkers over the age of sixty experienced food insecurity in 2020, but it is likely higher now. Every day we hear from our participants that they are being forced to make impossible choices between covering their rent, paying for medication, and buying food. Many are going through their savings and at the end of their ropes. Just last week, a gentleman came to us crying because he didn't have enough food. It was heartbreaking. Across our older adult centers, we serve about two hundred and fifty meals a day, five days a week. With inflation, we have noticed the funding received per meal does not go as far with our vendor. Meals now include cheaper cuts of meat. We used to receive a variety of fruit like kiwis and bananas. Now we mostly get apples. The city should consider increasing the funding per meal to ensure we can provide seniors with quality nutritious foods. We are only currently funded to serve lunch, but we know if we could serve breakfast, snacks, and even dinner, there would be no shortage of demand. Our recent city council initiative that was very helpful to our participants was the Fresh Food for Seniors Program. Seniors could buy a large bag of fresh produce from local farmers for just ten dollars. This kind of food program is a wonderful complement to our onsite meals. Our seniors loved being able to make salads and soups at home. Overall, more funding per meal, the opportunity to serve breakfast and snacks, and more initiatives that provide older adults with affordable nutritious food would go a long way for our community, especially as inflation is squeezing budgets. Greenwich House applauds the New York City Council for working to address food insecurity for our older community members. I thank the committee for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Moving on to Loretta Wilson.
My name is Loretta Wilson and I'm a kitchen aide at Westbeth Older Adult Center at Greenwich House. Thank you to Chair Hudson, Chair Mealy, and fellow city council members of this, for this opportunity to testify. Greenwich House provides education programs, health service, and older adult services. Greenwich House operates a network of five older adult centers in Manhattan, offering our members vital social, educational, physical, and cultural resources. I have worked in older adult service for over twenty years and I have never seen seniors facing the kinds of challenges that they are up against right now. Data shows that poverty rates increased for older adults in 2021. So many people tell us that they can't afford groceries. As a kitchen aide, I serve lunch to our members every day and I get to know them. They are like family. Our centers open until 1:00 PM on Saturdays, where we are closed over the weekend. A lot of our members tell me they do not have access to much food until we open again on Tuesday. For example, I recently became concerned about one of our members who was eighty-six years old. She came in on a Tuesday and said she wasn't feeling well and I encouraged her to get something to eat. I learned it was her first proper meal since Saturday. If we have funding to provide frozen meals to ensure members have something to eat over the weekends, that would really help. We are, we are currently only funded to serve lunch, but I often put out leftovers, bread, and fruits in the morning so members can have a small breakfast. Funding for a proper breakfast and snacks will also help us better meet the needs of our community. Many of our members have mobility challenges and can't easily get to a food bank. The nearby grocery stores are very expensive. They rely on us. It's hard not to be able to give them everything they need. Overall, more funding per meal, the opportunity to serve breakfast and snacks, and ability to provide more frozen meals for weekends would really help our community. Thank you to New York City Council for working to address food insecurity for our older community members and thank you to the committee for the opportunity to testify today. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Brianna Payton-Williams.
Hello, I'm Brianna Payton-Williams, the Communications and Policy Associate here at Levon, New York. And thank you to Chair Mealy and Chair Hudson for the opportunity to testify today. In addition, we just want to show our appreciation also to DIFTA, now NYC Aging, for all their work and under the leadership of Commissioner Cortez Vasquez, including the recent establishment of the Cabinet on Aging. So Levon, New York's members include more than a hundred community-based nonprofits that provide core services which allow all New Yorkers to thrive in our community as we age. And as we know, for many older New Yorkers, food insecurity remains a harsh reality of daily living. And even prior to the pandemic, many older adults relied on meals from older adult centers for more than half of their daily nutritional intake. And here in New York City, an estimated twenty-one percent of older adults living in New York City are facing poverty and too often are having to choose between paying for their rent or buying food. And for a growing diverse aging population, older adult centers were and continue to be a lifeline during the pandemic, particularly in response to the increased risk of food insecurity and a rise in social isolation that has plagued so many older adults. And so the city has an opportunity to create long-term solutions and make meaningful investments to ensure all New Yorkers have access to equitable community-based services in their community. And in response to that, Levon, New York encourages the city to assess and allocate funding for the significant inflation impacts on raw and gas and food price. And as we've heard today, this really continues to be an unavoidable financial strain that has created challenges for providers to continue to meet the growing capacity for home delivered meals as well as congregate meals. We also encourage the city to continue to support new models of service, including grab and go meals. And these new models of service were really critical and successful in ensuring for those who aren't comfortable to come back in person for congregate meals due to COVID or other personal reasons, are able to still receive food. In addition, we encourage the city to work with older adult centers to assess the utilization of congregate meals at, at older adult centers as providers continue to adapt to a new normal. And it's really evident that older adult centers have returned to a new normal that has posed new challenges for in-person services and programming. And that includes congregate meals as well as coupled with the challenges voiced by older adult participants, including public safety, new mobility and cognitive challenges, as well as other factors. And so in response to this, we really encourage the city to work with older adult centers to ensure that they are addressing the new challenges for both older adults and providers. We also encourage the city to assess the demand for case management to ensure all clients can be screened, excuse me, for case management eligibility and receive the critical services that they are eligible for. And we also encourage the city to assess the demand for culturally competent meals and congregate meals. And lastly, we encourage the city to assess the benefits, or SNAP benefits, excuse me, for older adults. As we know, the underutilization rates of SNAP benefits are really a major problem due to stigma and misconceptions. More information can be found in our written testimony and thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Moving on to Tara Klein.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify, Chair Mealy, Chair Hudson, and the council. My name is Tara Klein. I am the Deputy Director of Policy and Advocacy at United Neighborhood Houses. UNH is a policy and social change organization that represents forty settlement houses in New York City. Our members provide a wide variety of services that reach over eighty thousand New Yorkers each year. They operate programs including older adult centers, NORC's home delivered meals programs, geriatric mental health, and others. Greenwich House is one of our members here on the panel. Our members also run a range of food programs that reach all ages, including food pantries and urban farms and benefits outreach for food benefits like SNAP. And so we really appreciate the opportunity to share updates and concerns about food insecurity in older adults. My written testimony has a lot more information. It includes some recently released census numbers that talk about the growing older adult population in New York City, as well as showing that the population is getting more racially diverse, more older adults are living alone, and there are more older adults who are reliant on SNAP food benefits. Our settlement house members have indicated that participation for in-person activities is still not back to pre-pandemic levels. This is largely due to persistent fears about COVID-19 and now influenza and RSV as well. And those centers that are able to offer grab and go meals as well as virtual and hybrid programming have seen a lot of success in that flexibility. But those programs do need additional support and funding in many cases for those options. And I want to call out grab and go in particular because we heard a lot about that earlier. Grab and go is only technically permitted right now if these were in the RFP that were, that was completed during the pandemic. So older adult centers had to have the foresight that they would know that the pandemic would be ongoing a year, two years, who knows how long this is going to last, in order to be able to offer grab and go. We really want to make this available to anyone who wants to offer that service. And so we hope you'll help us advocate to DIFTA to allow that flexibility. And then broadly on some budgetary matters, we are concerned with some issues that are really quickly reaching crisis levels and we need intervention from the city. I really want to highlight the record high levels of inflation and the fact that there have been no contract amendments to meet inflation for home delivered meals programs or for older adult centers for congregate meals. There was a large increase in home delivered meals last year for rates and we're so appreciative for that. But I'll say that that number that we reached, the eleven seventy-eight per meal, is a number we'd been advocating for, for many years, since before the pandemic, in fact. And so it does not take into account recent inflation and providers really do need to see another increase. And then I also just want to mention the growing challenges with recruitment and retention of staff who run these programs. Because contract values are so low, there is a lot of, a huge challenge with. Because contract values are so low, there is a lot of a huge challenge with trying to hire for these positions and keep qualified staff. There's competition from other industries, and so we really need to see another investment from the city this year for wages. And I'll say it's especially difficult for folks to hire bilingual caseworkers. Those job postings, we've heard, are sometimes out there for close to a year. We're also going to make a big push for additional infrastructure and capital funding this year, and we look forward to having your support with us when we get into the budget cycle. So thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you all. We're going to be moving on to--
I have a question. I just saw-- What do you think about how much of the capital-- Oh, that's what you just said. How many vans do you think we need to be replaced in these senior centers? Anyone can answer those questions.
Yeah, so I know that the city recently included an investment to support 44 new vans at home-delivered meals programs. We have not done a count of how many are needed, but we've heard anecdotally that many of the contractors need more than what they've been given. I know one of our members said they received two vans, new vans, from that funding, and they're very grateful, but they have other vans that are just so old and are breaking down. And we also know that catalytic converter thefts have been an issue. And then another issue with that I'd like to highlight is that subcontractors for home-delivered meals programs were not eligible for new vans. And because they're not, they don't contract directly with DIFTA, they work with the contractors. And so that's something we'd like the city to look at as well because they have similar needs.
Thank you. I definitely want to look into that also, the subcontractors. And Ms. LiveOn New York, could you explain to me the Polyfood voucher program, the Go and Dine? I really like that.
So this is a program that we've seen through our members' vision where they have something similar where older adults can sign up for vouchers at participating restaurants. This is something that we've included in our recent report, Aging is Everyone's Business. And it's just a program that we've seen to really increase access for older adults through New York City. So, you know, older adults are one way, but there's also, you know, the home-delivered meals, this program, as well as the SNAP benefits. But this is something I'd love to discuss more and kind of some of the ideas that we have to address, you know, the food insecurity across New York City.
I definitely will be meeting with you in regards to that. And Ms. Wilson, I heard something in your proposal-- Oh, I'm sorry. Across the adult centers, we serve about 250 meals. Week inflation, we noticed that we received the meals-to-go vendors. Meals now include cheaper cuts of meat. Is that happening, you feel, to the majority of senior centers? Ms. Coles, I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes, that's happening throughout the variety of our senior centers. And can I just address that? Because we can no longer do grab-and-go meals, I think that is also impacting how many meals we are able to do. We are ready to do much more for seniors.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, panel. I will be talking to y'all really soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, panel. We're moving on to our second in-person panel, Vic Benson, City Meals on Wheels. And then is Eric Diaz here?
Yes.
Eric Diaz? All right. Not seeing Eric, so I think it will just be Vic Benson.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm Vic Benson, the Policy Analyst at City Meals on Wheels. I would like to thank the council and Chair Hudson and Mealy for holding this important hearing on food insecurity at older adult centers. While City Meals works with the home-delivered meal clients in the DIFTA system, many of them were OAC attendees first, and most are served by meal programs operating out of OACs. Given our close relationship with the network, we want to shed light on older adults caught in the gap between OACs and HDM, particularly those that may have attended congregate service before the pandemic but haven't returned and haven't transitioned to HDM, as well as former Get Food meal recipients who haven't transitioned to either service. We have heard a similar refrain across the network. Congregate attendance has not rebounded despite efforts and outreach, and providers are concerned with whether hungry older adults in their neighborhoods are able to access food. There are not suddenly fewer hungry older New Yorkers. We know this is not the case, and yet programs are not seeing the numbers they used to for in-person services. There was a rush from the city to return to normal operations as quickly as possible without considering ways to seriously adapt to our COVID reality. We asked the city to conduct a survey of former OAC attendees to learn why they haven't returned and if their needs are being met, and a follow-up survey on the food security of former Get Food recipients who did not transfer to either program. We also believe there should be a formal process to allow OAC attendees to transition to HDM in the short or long term. Centers have attendees who stop showing up to OACs for a variety of reasons that staff does not know or are unable to determine after doing outreach. There should be a way to fast-track vulnerable OAC attendees to receive HDM and ways to notify OACs if a client of theirs starts receiving HDM independently. For example, an OAC attendee who knows they will be going for surgery, has about a longer-term illness, or has a mobility-limiting injury should be able to sign up for HDM services through the DIFTA OAC they already attend. If it will only be temporary, OAC should have the ability to presume eligibility and enroll the attendee for the duration of their need. Some programs have, as we've heard, voiced the desire to continue grab-and-go but cannot because they didn't opt-in during DIFTA's most recent RFP, a time where many say they couldn't predict what the pandemic would become or its lasting effects. While OACs still struggle with attendance, programs that want to continue grab-and-go should be allowed and given adequate funds for the units. Offering grab-and-go meals encourages older adults to have contact with the vital community hubs we know OACs to be. Some may not want or feel comfortable having a sit-down meal at a center, especially during continued COVID risk, and should not be denied access to nutrition services. If older New Yorkers were receiving Get Food or Grab-and-Go meals, they came to City Nutrition Services because they were hungry. It is cruel to deny a hungry person food because they do not meet a very narrow conception of being physically able to show up and dine indoors. In our work, we see how OACs and HDM programs are siloed in dealing with clients, even when the meals are prepared in the same kitchen. Providers want to offer bridge services, and they understand that there is a middle ground between those who are able and want to come in for full center services and activities and those who are entirely homebound. We ask that the city seizes this opportunity to adapt these programs so they can continue to meet the needs of older adults who are living very different realities than when these programs were created decades ago. We will be submitting our longer written testimony as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our in-person panels. We'll be now moving on to folks testifying via Zoom. Our first panel will be Kevin Jones from AARP, Nicholas Bues from Food Bank for New York City, Dr. Cynthia Maurer from Visiting Neighbors, Eleonora Amoyah, and Hannah Tager from WIN. And so we'll start with Kevin Jones.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chairs Hudson and Mealy, and the members of City Council Committee on Aging. My name is Kevin Jones. I'm the Associate State Director of Advocacy at AARP New York, which represents 750,000 members across New York City. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Earlier this year, AARP New York released a first-ever blueprint for action filled with recommendations to help city officials address top challenges among older New York City residents. One of the top challenges we identified in this report is food insecurity. Even prior to the pandemic, food insecurity was a growing issue among the 50-plus New Yorkers that we communicated with, and an estimated of 21% of older adults in New York City live in poverty and have to make tough choices like paying rent or buying food. And Black, Latino, and Asian-American New Yorkers are even more likely to experience food insecurity and hunger. Now, these same older adults are dealing with the impacts of inflation, which has resulted in rapidly increasing food prices, making it even harder for older adults to put food on the table. Older adult centers are a lifeline for these older adults serving and delivering meals. We must do more to support them. Senior centers provide food delivery services to homebound older adults, as well as grab-and-go meals that are essential to many residents. Before the pandemic, roughly 1 million New York City residents were food insecure, including 1 in 10 older New Yorkers. That number has spiked to 2.2 million, or roughly 25% of the population, really stressing that food insecurity is a clear and urgent crisis in this city. Last year, the city increased the reimbursement rates for meals, but with inflation, it's likely the increase was offset by rising prices. Older adult centers need more funding for meals and more support in general. Specifically, we're asking the city to expand the city's funding allocated for home-delivered meals programs to ensure that more eligible older New Yorkers can access two meals per day, seven days per week, with culturally appropriate food options, and increase the per-meal reimbursement rate for meal providers, given that the city's funding currently does not cover the cost of these meals. Given that half of older adults in the city are foreign-born, we also call on the city to assess the demand for culturally competent meals for congregate and home-delivered meals, and then make a plan to meet this demand. Finally, we join LiveOn New York in calling on the city to support new models for services including grab-and-go meals. I'm going to be submitting a slightly longer and more detailed testimony in writing, but I'm happy you take any questions, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much. Please submit your testimony.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. And then we're moving on to Nicholas. Nicholas Bues.
Hello, Chairs Hudson and Mealy. I'm Nick Buse from the Food Bank for New York City. I'm the Director of Government Relations here. Food Bank has provided nutritious and culturally appropriate meals to New Yorkers for 40 years. We serve about 700 community programs with food deliveries from our 90,000-square-foot warehouse in the South Bronx, and we partner with hundreds of community organizations to provide additional services, including the city's largest free income tax preparation program, SNAP assistance, and nutrition education. We also directly operate an older adult program at our Community Kitchen in West Harlem, so we deeply appreciate the important role that older adult centers play in providing community, programming, nutritious meals. Last year, at that site alone, we served 1.2 million meals to older adults through our food pantry. We know that SNAP is the first line of defense against hunger. Among households in New York City with one or more seniors half rely on SNAP, yet hundreds of thousands of eligible older New Yorkers don't participate. As some folks have discussed already, that may be because people are unaware the program exists, or that the benefits that they claim would take away from others, especially children, which, to be clear, it would not. When SNAP benefits are insufficient or unavailable, many seek assistance through our emergency food network. Most of the network are not older adult centers. They're food pantries and soup kitchens which are open to the public. A recent survey revealed that nearly 90% of our network is serving a high percentage of older adults. So what that means is that the emergency food network has become the de facto backstop against hunger for older adults in New York City. Many of our partners serve seniors with special distribution hours or are providing home-delivered groceries. During the pandemic, public and private investment in emergency food increased. These supports were essential and helped us meet spiking need, but today, those emergency resources are gone, yet the lines at our food pantries remain just as long. In the face of barriers to accessing SNAP and a reliance on emergency food, it's not surprising but deeply concerning that the Census Bureau reports that poverty among older adults is growing. Older adults have been left out of essential national anti-poverty measures, including the child tax and earned income tax credits. New York City has the opportunity, however, to invest in assistance for older adults, and we applaud Councilmember and General Welfare Chair Diana Ayala for her leadership in pushing New York State to create a grocery benefit for older adults that is regardless of immigration status. So as the city looks to additional solutions to address poverty among older adults, we urge the city to leverage and invest in the services of the emergency food network, including capacity support for special services to older adults. Food Bank for New York City--
Thank you. Time has expired.
--will continue to partner, and we thank you for your continued advocacy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to be moving on to Dr. Cynthia Maurer.
Thank you for this wonderful opportunity to give a voice to a population that is not able to get to older adult centers. The seniors that I'm referring to are amongst the oldest adults. Visiting Neighbors helps anyone over the age of 60, but the vast majority of our clients are over the age of 89, 90. In fact, that's our average age. And we have 18 seniors who are going to be 100 very soon. So our population is definitely getting older, and people coming in for help are people who are older. We had 102-year-olds yesterday who asked for help for the first time. She said, "I didn't need you before, and now I need you." We are here on the front lines in a different way, in that we're basically utilizing volunteers to provide amazing services to these seniors who need us. Most of our people are alone. Most of our people do not have family or friends to turn to because they may not live here, or because they lost family and friends through the years, and they're pretty much all by themselves. And food insecurity is a huge issue, but it is such an intense concern, not only about the food itself, but the issues surrounding the food. A lot of seniors sometimes are so depressed, they don't want to eat, and they don't necessarily look towards eating or take care of themselves nutrition-wise. And we have our volunteers serve as these eyes and ears in the community, doing what we need them to do, that report back to us. And we have a senior who is depressed or sad. We work with them and talk to them about what's really going on to try to get them to eat, as well as get them access to shopping. Our volunteers have done everything from stand-on pantry lines, as well as go to local restaurants who have donated extra food. The volunteers will shop for or with the seniors. Now that the pandemic is somewhat better, I mean, obviously, it's still going on, but it isn't as dire in the same way in the very beginning, though people are still dying. Seniors were terrified of going out and had absolutely no access. So our volunteers came through, and they did all kinds of things to be safe with seniors and went and got them food. But now that they can get out again, a lot of our seniors have found themselves incredibly isolated in the sense that they were feeling a sense of cabin fever and wanted to go in to shop for themselves but needed that arm to hold. So our volunteers would escort them to and from safely to be able to do their shopping, as well as encourage them to eat it, as well as talk with them about superfoods. We have a wonderful nursing program where the nurses will talk with our seniors about dietary needs and restrictions and what are the concerns. Ultimately, we're here to keep a population out of--
Thank you. Time has expired.
Thank you. And I just want to say, we are so appreciative of the city council. You are our champions. You really are. I don't know what we would do without you, and I don't know what our city seniors would do without you. Thank you for helping us continue to do what we do and keep our people independent, active, and safe as possible, and healthy and fed. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a few people who aren't logged in, so we're actually going to move on to MJ Akma from Sage. MJ?
Good afternoon, and thank you, Chairs Mealy and Hudson, for organizing this important oversight hearing. My name is MJ Akma with Sage, the country's first and largest organization dedicated to improving the lives of LGBTQ+ and HIV-affected older people. In New York City, Sage runs a network of older adult centers and is the onsite service provider in New York's first LGBTQ+ affordable elder housing developments, which are located in Brooklyn and the Bronx. LGBTQ+ elders face higher rates of social isolation, poverty, and lack of access to culturally competent services and support, all of which leads to disproportionate rates of hunger. These conditions have all been exaggerated by inflation and the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The result is LGBTQ+ elders are 60% more likely to experience food insecurity than their non-LGBTQ+ peers, and isolated rates are even higher for transgender elders and LGBTQ+ elders of color. LGBTQ+ elders of color. We must take steps to address the unique needs and challenges facing LGBTQ+ older New Yorkers that lead to this food insecurity. I want to echo the recommendations outlined by Levon New York here and focus my testimony today on the need for the support of new models of service, including grab-and-go meals. While the grab-and-go meal program was created as an emergency response at the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, it has proven to be a vital resource for our community members. This program has been especially important for participants in our Sage Positive Program, which serves older New Yorkers with HIV, including long-term survivors. New Yorkers aging with HIV have pronounced health concerns and higher rates of food insecurity that were addressed by this delivery model. It is especially important to prioritize programs that support New Yorkers aging with HIV, because by 2030, 70% of New Yorkers living with HIV will be over the age of 50. So this is a rapidly growing population. While we certainly understand the importance and impact of congregate meals, we strongly recommend that the grab-and-go model is also preserved. We also ask that discretionary funding through DIFTA provides more flexibility outside of DIFTA's standard expense contract template. This change would be able to support recent fresh food pantries that we have piloted at our Bronx, Brooklyn, and Harlem centers. These pilot programs have resulted in lines wrapping around the block and have been proving to be a strongly effective way to connect LGBTQ+ elders to fresh produce. This is especially important for elders who live in food deserts and are unable to travel outside of their neighborhood to do their food shopping. Again, thank you for holding this important hearing and providing me the opportunity to testify. We look forward to working with the city and the City Council to address food insecurity among LGBTQ+ and HIV-affected older New Yorkers.
Thank you. All right. We're going to be moving on to our second Zoom panel, and so we'll have Sharanya Palai from India Home, Bonnie Lamagui, Jeremy Kaplan from Encore Community Services, Tanya Colazo from JASA, and Michelle Rodriguez from University Settlement Society. We'll be starting with Sharanya.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Hudson, Chair Mealy, City Council Committee on Aging and Subcommittee on Older Adults and Food Insecurity for this opportunity today. I'm testing on behalf of India Home, the largest organization dedicated to New York South Asian older adults through culturally competent older adult programs. We're in six locations across Queens, in Jamaica, Ozon Park, Flushing, Kew Gardens, Almhurst, and Jamaica Estates. We get anywhere from 200 to 300 older adults per week at our centers. Our food programs have been a huge trusted component of our services from our inception. We've served nearly 200,000 meals to our older adults, catered to their diverse South Asian diets, whether they're Bangladeshi Muslims, Gujarati Hindu vegetarians, Jain vegetarians, or Indo-Gaianese Hindus. It's been core to our mission that our programs fill the gap in cultural competence that conventional older adult programs had lacked from the get-go. Research had shown that South Asian older adults had already been food insecure prior to the pandemic, and a needs assessment we conducted in 2017 showed that having access to food and groceries was New York's South Asian older adults' highest financial concern. When the pandemic first hit in a time of absolute crisis, India Home maintained our dedication and pivoted to provide home-delivered meals and groceries that we had never done before, while still ensuring cultural competence of what we serve. For 10% to 20% of our clients, this was the meal they relied on as their only nutritious meal for the day. Culturally competent meals truly make or break programming for the older adults we serve. They require ingredients and dishes they're comfortable with, and partnerships with caterers that are not only familiar, but proficient and well-versed with their cultural palates, while upholding our clients' health and interests through nutritious choices. We have been entrusted in selecting those partners that have been best suited to meet the needs of our older adults. The budget that we receive for culturally competent meals that we serve at our six centers is not sufficient to meet the actual costs. Our food is tailored to the diverse of communities we serve, who have very diverse palates. Our meals are a large driving factor for bringing our older adults to the center, which we know that DFTA wants. However, of the annual meal costs incurred at our older adult centers, which is our organization's biggest expense, 20% has to be covered through other sources of funding. At the beginning of the fiscal year, we know that DFTA emphasized to have in-person congregate meals without allowing grab-and-go. Our sites are in six different locations. They're in mosques, Hindu temples, other community centers, which help to get our services to be more accessible. Some of these locations are smaller with limited seating space for consumption of congregate meals. I don't need to say COVID-19 is very much still a concern for our older adults, with spikes in our own neighborhoods and communities, and cases increasing as we speak. We need for all city agencies to be on the same page. We need the agencies to be adaptive and realistic to the needs demonstrated by our communities and holding our client's safety as utmost importance. With COVID numbers increasing, there are clients that do not want to eat at the center, and rightfully so, in crowded programming spaces where they want to engage in the programming safely with masks. Mandating them to eat in that same space is insensitive to their health and well-being.
Thank you. Time has expired.
Oh, man. Sorry about that. As the Commissioner had said, life is not the same and will never be the same. We can't force upon our life-proforming programs and methods that are not appropriate for the current reality. We need consideration of the grab-and-go program on a long-term basis, if not consistently throughout the year with the option to wax and wane as per the seasons in which we're seeing the highest cases of COVID. And we need the financial support from DFTA to support these methods. We need, you know, more funding per meal, acknowledging the higher cost of culturally competent meals. We can't afford to be tone-deaf and leave any senior behind. It is imperative that we do not deny our South Asian older adults the access to quality, culturally competent food that they deserve. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. And you can submit the full testimony in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to Bonnie Lamagui. Bonnie, if you're on.
Hi, thank you. My name is Bonnie Lamagui, and I'm the Assistant Executive Director of Senior Services and Community Services at Hamilton Madison House, based in Chinatown on the Lower East Side, increasingly in neighborhoods throughout the city. But in particularly, the subject of this hearing is serving to seniors and addressing food insecurity. And we applaud the Subcommittee for focusing on this crucial subject, and we appreciate the opportunity to provide input. Since the onset of COVID, as many have testified today, we've been concerned about barriers to access healthy and affordable food among seniors, and we have assembled at HMH a team of partners and volunteers regularly conducting food pantries and providing home-delivered food packages to seniors residing in public housing. We have found that this need persists even with the relaxation of COVID restrictions. This spring, we launched a youth-run farmer's market at Alfredine Smith Public Housing in Chinatown in partnership with upstate New York-based Norwich Meadows Farm, and the organization put in its stall market, which supports farmers statewide. Within the cultures of local residents, we've been serving bok choy, salad, greens, eggs, spinach, and let's not forget, corn. They're very excited about their corn. These items are reasonably priced, and we accept all forms of payment via EBT and green bucks. The initiative gained popularity as the season progressed, and we typically serve more than 200 customers per day on Sundays, majority of them seniors, who have been especially grateful for the opportunity to often arrive an hour before opening to take their places in line and ensure secure purchase of the items of their choices. The farmer's market was slated to close in September, but due to demand, we kept it running through December, and on days of inclement weather, we were inside our community center. Presently, we are seeking funds to keep the market going on a year-round basis whereby seniors from our NORCS will receive weekly deliveries of boxes of fresh produce. Our plan is to also assist qualified seniors in enrolling in SNAP, thereby allowing them to receive the food at a 50% discount through the benefit available through New York City Department of Health and Mental Health. We welcome the support and partnership, and we'd be grateful to be helpful in encouraging the adaptation of these practices more broadly citywide, and we thank you again. On a side note, I do want to add, we also run the City Hall Senior Center in Lower Manhattan, and we are fortunate enough to have put grab-and-go into our contract. I do want to point out that grab-and-go has not impacted. We are seeing pre-pandemic levels in our groups, in our activities. We are very concerned if it was decided that even though we do have it in our contract, that we couldn't do it in an ongoing capacity, that it would limit who's coming, because as it was already mentioned, where they can mask, they feel comfortable. Where they don't feel they can mask, they do not feel comfortable, and eating in a group is where they can't mask. So I think it's really important to point out that difference. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to Jeremy Kaplan. Jeremy?
Hi, good afternoon Chairs Mealy and Hudson, and thank you so much for allowing us to continue to testify virtually. I know that made it possible for me to be here today. My name is Jeremy Kaplan. I'm the Executive Director of Encore Community Services. Between our flagship center and our robust home-delivered meal program between 14th Street and 110th Street, Encore provides around 1,500 meals a day to older adults. The majority of those meals are scratch-cooked in our very own kitchen, and we were also responsible for facilitating about 2/3 of the city's recovery meals program. I want to start off by acknowledging that there have been many positive developments in the past year regarding meals for older adults, and we are grateful for all of those involved in making those shifts happen. The reimbursement rate increases have been extremely impactful, and the RFP to invest in capacity building for kitchens within NYC Aging Network will also surely help to improve the quality within the system. That said, the city is failing to reckon with at least two major issues. We know that the City of New York is not providing meals to every older adult that might be eligible for those services. Providers are still stretched thin, facing high turnover in low-wage jobs with lack of critical capital funds to expand our operations. We talked a lot about utilization today. These issues of underfunding for staff positions in particular and capital needs are highly affecting the network's ability to meet utilization goals. I believe there should be a more expansive outreach strategy to potential home-delivered meal clients throughout the city, who we are not yet currently reaching, but even if there were, we would not be able to absorb the dramatic increase that we'd see with the current funding levels. There is a gulf between who we are currently serving and who we could help, and it will only continue to grow as the demographics continue to rapidly shift, as we all know that they are. But perhaps the biggest problem that we see as a city is that we seem to have decided that only one meal a day is acceptable when providing older adults who have been evaluated and deemed among the most vulnerable members of our community. Every single provider in this network has heard stories and has data to show that clients who we are currently serving, they are stretching these meals to two and three meals a day. We are not providing them what they need nutritionally with the one meal a day. For older adults who are medically fragile and either already facing or at risk for cognitive decline, going hungry is devastating to their overall well-being. Everyone deserves to be fully fed, but these folks rely on us bringing them food, so we have to do better by them. I recognize that what I'm talking about here will require a major investment in shift in policy.
Thank you. Time has expired.
As you said, Chair Hudson, DIFTA is the lowest-funded agency in the City of New York, and it is absolutely atrocious. We should be ashamed of that when looking at our budget. I look forward to seeing increased investments, and thank you to this committee for all of your support in our work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Tanya Colazo.
Chairs Hudson and Mealy, and members of the Committee on Aging and Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity for hosting today's important meeting. JASSA welcomes today's oversight hearing on food insecurity among older adults. My name is Tanya Colazo. I am the Associate Director of Care and Case Management Nutrition Services. JASSA is a not-for-profit agency that honors older New Yorkers as vital members of society, providing services for over 50 years that support Aging with Purpose and partnering to build strong communities. JASSA has a comprehensive integrated network of services that provide a continuum of community-based care in the Bronx, Brooklyn, Manhattan, and Queens. Programming promotes independence, safety, wellness, community participation, and an enhanced quality of life for New York City's older adults. These programs reach over 40,000 clients and include affordable senior housing, home care, and a wide range of social services, which include case management, older adult centers, NORC supportive services, home-delivered meals, caregiver support, mental health, advocacy, legal services, and adult protective and guardianship services. JASSA's home-delivered meals program, older adult centers, and other special food initiatives provide older adults living with food insecurity several pathways to access meals safely, including hot meals and grab-and-go meals. Our older adult centers and home-delivered meals program has provided 1.1 million meals annually. In addition to home-delivered meals, JASSA has NORC and case management programs across the boroughs that have the ability to assess for and assist clients in obtaining meal service. During the height of the pandemic, JASSA, in collaboration with other community partners and key stakeholders, provided special pandemic relief to clients, including residents of JASSA's housing developments. JASSA's programs work closely with food pantries and either provide monthly pantry days at the NORCS and/or OACs, or refer clients to food pantries in their areas. New York City aging reportedly distributed approximately 40,000 farmer's market coupon booklets this year, with coupon booklets that totaled $25 each. The coupons are very well-received. During the spring holidays of Easter and Passover each year, JASSA provides clients access to special holiday funds to help with purchase of appropriate foods for the holiday. We provide clients with nutrition educations in multiple ways. The first is through the JASSA Cooks Initiative. The goal is to educate clients on nutrition that can help to optimize their health and well-being. Our NORCS and older adult centers work with consultants and JASSA's health services team to provide chronic disease self-management programs. We've launched a partnership with Plant-Powered Metro New York, a community-based organization committed to educating the public on the benefits of plant-based nutrition on health outcomes. Finally, JASSA would like to express our deep appreciation to the New York City Council and the administration for investing in meal vehicles in the fiscal year 22 budget. We're very thankful for that. This funding will ensure the delivery of safe and healthy meals to clients. This investment and the continued support for home-delivered meals is critical to the sustainability and food security of vulnerable New Yorkers. JASSA is pleased to serve as a resource for any additional information on food insecurity among older New Yorkers, older adults in New York. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to, is Michelle Rodriguez logged in? Michelle Rodriguez? All right. Moving on to Eleonora Amaya. Eleonora? Okay. Hannah Tagar? And Helen An? Okay. Seeing that none of those folks are logged in, is there anyone we might have inadvertently missed? Anyone who has not testified who wishes to that is logged in? Oh, I see that Michelle raised her hand. All right. Michelle? Michelle Rodriguez? Michelle, are you muted? Michelle, if you could accept unmute, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry about that. I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to testify. My name is Michelle Rodriguez. I am the Program Director for the Meals on Wheels Program, the Neighborhood Center, and the Melzer Center at University Settlement in the Lower East Side. Across Manhattan, Brooklyn, University Settlement provides early childhood and youth programs, mental health and eviction prevention programs, as well as older adult programs. On the Lower East Side, we continue to see the impact of older adults experiencing food insecurity. We run two monthly food pantries, one at Melzer Center and the other one at the Neighborhood Center, and as inflation has driven prices up, participation in our food pantries has exploded. Pre-COVID, we regularly would have 90 participants coming to our monthly food pantry distribution, and now we see almost 200 people at both of our sites. That's 200 each. Our food pantry distribution starts at 9:00, and we see participants lining up by 5:00 a.m. And sometimes, the night before a pantry distribution, some participants lock their carts to the fence to save their spot in line, because there's immense anxiety in the line over whether everyone will be able to get food. And sometimes, this anxiety can turn into anger at other participants. At our Neighborhood Center on Allen Street, we provide hot meals to an average of 75 to about 85 older adults from Monday to Friday, and we can share heartbreaking stories about how our older adults need more food support. We serve a hot breakfast, and we ask for a voluntary contribution, which is, you know, part of our just-to-contract. We recently had to raise We recently had to raise our contribution from 50 cents to $1 to cover our rising food costs, and then we saw significant loss of members eating breakfast with us. One couple went from buying two breakfasts to splitting one in between the two of them, and our older adults cannot afford additional 50 cents for breakfast. And while the contribution is voluntary, many participants feel too self-conscious to be in line and not contribute. We've had participants asking to buy an additional lunch to take home for dinner, and, you know, that presents other issues because of our head count and the way DIFTA counts participants. And so participants have gotten creative and started buying meals for friends or relatives at home, or spouses, and so that they can have an extra meal to take home with them. We need to ensure that our older adults have access to healthy and affordable food in a dignified way. And some ways that we can support our older adults facing food insecurity are we need healthier food options for distribution. Our food bags at our pantry primarily consist of canned foods, which they don't eat. Our participants want and deserve fresh produce, fresh fruits and vegetables. And we could receive funding to purchase more wholesale fresh produce from our vendors, which we would then distribute to our participants, and if there was flexibility in our contracts to allow participants to buy multiple meals, including Meals on Wheels, many of our Meals on Wheels participants as well claim that they're still hungry because it's just one meal per day. We need to do more to support our aging communities in New York City when it comes to food access, and we all appreciate the council's time to hold this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then, at this time, if there's anyone else who wishes to testify, whose name has not been called yet, please use the Zoom Raise Hand function. Seeing no hands, I will turn it back to the chairs for closing statements.
I just want to thank everyone for coming and videoconferencing this important meeting, and looking forward to continued advocacy from everyone. This population is so much in need, and I heard so many different things today that I know what I have to do in regards to making it better, that when I get older, I have a good time with food. Thank you. I'm turning it over to my colleague for last words.
Thank you so much Chair Mealy, and thank you to everyone who's testified today, including the Commissioner and members of the administration. Food insecurity is something that we know has existed for a very long time, but was likely exacerbated during the pandemic, and it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that we continue to allocate the resources and the funding needed so that organizations, like so many of the ones that have testified today, can continue to support older adults and all of their needs. So thank you all for your testimony again, and this meeting is adjourned.